Thank you. Can I trade you for that one?
And you could plug into the leading.
Eileen, are you ready? It's past six. You are?
Okay. Good evening and welcome. This is the Chico Unified School District's regular board meeting. Today is December 11th, 2019. The board has been in closed session, but there is nothing to report. I would now like to call this meeting to order, and I would ask that you join us in a flag salute. Well done, students. All right. So we'll now move on to our agenda item number four. And this is our organizational meeting, and it has been my honor and my pleasure to serve as board president for this past year. But it is time for me to pass my gavel on to one of my colleagues. So what we will do is go through each of the different positions and accept nominations. We will vote on each of those nominations if we get more than one, and we will go from there. So, starting off with item 4.1, we are now going to elect a new president. Yes? Okay, so we have a nomination for Elizabeth Griffin and a second by Dr. Kaiser. How do you feel about that?
I accept.
Very good. So all those in favor, please, let's do a roll call vote.
Robinson, aye.
Kaiser, aye.
Hovey, aye.
Griffin, aye.
Very good. And Mr. Lando is not with us tonight, so he can't make that vote. All right. Well, congratulations. I'm gonna pass you the gavel.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Our next order of business is to elect the vice president. And I would like to take nominations at this time. Does anyone have a nomination? Yes, Ms. Robinson?
Thank you, Mad President. I nominate Kathy Kaiser as vice president for the upcoming term.
I'll second that. Okay, any other nominations or self-nominations? All right, seeing none, we will take a vote on Kathy Kaiser as vice president. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Okay, Kathy Kaiser is the new vice president. The next position we need to fill is the clerk. And is there any person who would like to nom-- yes, Ms. Kaiser? Do you accept that?
I do.
Okay, let's take a vote on that. Anybody else who cares to? No? Okay, Linda Hovey for clerk. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right, that takes care of that. And then we will appoint the secretary to the board. Generally, it is the superintendent. Do you accept appointment as secretary to the board? Okay, we will vote to appoint Ms. Staley as secretary to the board. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right, she is now secretary to the board. The next order of business is setting the date, time, and place of regular meetings. Our regular meetings are held on the third Wednesday of each month. We also have our usual workshop meetings, which are on the second-- or the first. First, the first Wednesday of each month. Does anyone object to that being still the order of our meetings?
No, I ask that we keep our current schedule.
Okay, and Ms. Robinson?
Do we have some guidance from our superintendent's right-hand person about context for our breaks?
The conflicts are-- have been noted in the schedule, the recommended schedule that was sent out. It's on the proposed meeting dates.
Is there-- actually, I would like to ask a clarifying question. Is there a specific reason why we choose the first and third rather than the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month?
As long as I've been here, it's been the first and third. I could not tell you why.
I would guess that it's to allow enough time in between for the agendas to be prepared and for people to prepare and for them to not be so frequently that, you know, it's taxing on the board. So...
And that's why I wonder if we moved to the second and fourth. Second for the workshops or special board meetings, and then the fourth.
Well, it would still have the weekend-- they would still be every two weeks, either way.
I would prefer that we just, at this point, keep the regular schedule that we've had because people have planned on it. But noted in our schedule are four exceptions: March 11th, June 24th, November 18th, and December the 9th. So there are some that are already identified.
Okay. Any more discussion with regards to the schedule of our meetings? And these, of course, would be the same starting time, which would be 5 o'clock for closed sessions and for the regular meetings, and 6 o'clock start times for the regular meetings. And the workshops, depending upon what the workshop is about, whether we have students present or teachers present, we might schedule them earlier, say at 5 o'clock, and then have our closed sessions afterwards. That's been the tradition.
Typically done, the regular board meetings closed at 5, the open session at 6, and then we flip that for the board workshops because of the staff involved, and we start the regular session at 5 and then hold closed after.
Okay, so, any more discussion about that, or would...
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So Wednesdays are set in stone because they've always been. And the only reason I keep bringing this back up is that myself and some other colleagues in the audience, we have a conflict once a month on our Wednesdays with a service organization that we work with.
Oh, I see.
It's not earth-shattering, but we would sure like to participate in both.
Okay, so what is your recommendation, then? Do you have a motion you'd like to make?
Well, is there another day of the week? Would a Thursday board meeting just be out of the question?
I can't do Thursdays.
You can't do Thursdays? Okay. And Tuesdays really doesn't give our secretary enough time to pull agendas together.
So with the 72-hour posting requirement, a Tuesday would make that really difficult.
Right, right. And Friday is just not a good day. All right, I'm going to bow to the will of my colleagues, and I will agree with the schedule as it stands.
Okay, may I have a motion, then?
I moved to approve-- I'm sorry. I moved to approve the 2:20 meeting schedule, which is the special workshops on the first Wednesday of the month and regular board meetings on the third Wednesday.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who cares to comment on the meetings, the meeting schedules? Okay, seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, that passes. As far as our agenda layout, the way that things currently stand, it is-- the layout of the agenda is-- it is created by the president and the superintendent, generally in meeting, giving consideration to items that have come forward or that are necessary to be considered in the district. Is there any further discussion about the current way of formatting the agenda? Okay. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the format, the agenda layout as it currently exists?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there anyone in the audience who cares to comment on the agenda layout? Okay, seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor of the current agenda layout and continuing it, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, that passes. Great. All righty, we will continue now with our student reports.
Well, because we are a student organization, we love to hear from our students. And at this point, it is my privilege to introduce Principal Emily Mullins, and she is going to talk to us about what we're gonna see here in a few minutes.
Good evening. Thank you. Well, I am Emily Mullins, principal at Hooker Oak, and I couldn't be more proud of our amazing school. We have so many great things happening for our students. One of the many are the opportunities that our students have to participate in band and choir. And we have an amazing teacher in Mr. Kim Gimble here. I've worked with a lot of music teachers, and he's definitely one of the finest. I'm incredibly proud of these students who are going to be performing tomorrow night at 7 o'clock PM at Hooker Oak School for their winter concert. So I thought it fitting that they have an opportunity to rehearse one of their songs for you. And I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. G to introduce the song to you.
Good evening. Good to see you all again. We're glad to be here. We're honored to be here. We're gonna do one song tonight, and I think it's one you up there on the board might remember from your childhood. It's a Peter, Paul, and Mary song called "A Solon." And we would like to perform that for you right now and invite you to our concert tomorrow night at 7 o'clock along with the Rosedale and Hooker Oak Band, combined 65 kids on our stage at Hooker Oak. So it's gonna be a big night tomorrow night, and we're glad to get started tonight with this one for you. So thank you.
That was beautiful. Thank you very much, Mr. Gimble, and all the children who participated. That was a great job you did. Wonderful.
Thank you to all of our parents who brought your children out so we could enjoy this music. And we'll give you just a little bit of time so you can go ahead and go home, get ready for school tomorrow. So while we have our parents and students exiting, I would like to invite up Andrew Mole, principal of alternative education. Just a couple seconds. Andrew, let's wait just a couple minutes so they can get out.
In the gloomy day, you need some fall colors, right?
In the gloomy day, you need some fall colors, right? All right. Good evening. It's always interesting and kind of fun to find the tricky ways to get someone to join us here this evening, every time we get to recognize somebody, so I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to recognize an extraordinary person, who without a doubt has the heart and soul it takes to make a difference every day. Having been a teacher for fifteen years, she has dedicated her career to the youth of our community. Five and a half years ago, she stepped foot on the Alted campus, and it would never be the same. From day one, she was met with challenges that most not have, might not ever face. As a counselor, you hear student stories and at times feel helpless, always searching for what to do next and how to do it as a means to help ease the pain and stress they are experiencing. When faced with these challenges, and I mean from day one, she has always made the right decision for what is best for her students, because she lets her heart lead the way. This certainly takes a toll on a person, excuse me, and this wonderful individual perseveres through excellent communication with her amazing team, and most of all, through her compassion for people. She does not just counsel students, she counsels us. In the most difficult of times, when we're all wearing it, she supports us, sharing her seemingly infinite wisdom. I'm humbled by her ability to take on the world, to make a difference, one student or a group of students at a time. I am absolutely amazed by her ability to name it to tame it, as I believe we all can benefit from such a skill. Her organizational mindset is to be modeled after, and something I learned very quickly five years ago, when the lives of our students and staff changed forever. I am just happy she didn't leave after the great circles and squares shows she received from a weird previous counselor she had prior to taking the job. Her family loves her, her colleagues love her, and her students love her. If you know her, it is easy to see why this is so. If you have not had the privilege to meet her, you are missing out, as she is an incredible human being. I'm extremely honored to have the chance to provide you with just a glimpse of how Quinn does make such an impact in all of our lives. I feel even more honored to work with her, to learn from her, and be inspired by her. Please join me in saying thank you to Ms. Quinn Mendez, Alternative Education Counselor Extraordinary. Thank you, Quinn. I hope I'm not in any trouble. I think I put a little stress on her.
All these tears are tight this time. All right, come on up here, we'll get a picture of, here's your apple, and your certificate, and your principal. Yay.
Do you need members of the board? I'd like to offer someone, come up here, who is a fantastic member of our staff. He's been with us now for about six years, and I'd like to welcome Michael Dear, please, to the podium. So, I may have tricked Mr. Dear to be here to answer questions about esports, and so forgive me for that. Michael is a fantastic member of our staff. I think all of you know Michael, and I know that the people on the, and senior cabinet have worked with Michael so many times in the past, they know his dedication, how much he loves doing what he does, helping people. He's a fantastic personality, and the fact that he is just so skilled at what he does, he just makes it look easy. And so, I haven't been doing desktop support in a while, and it's like I call him up, and he just comes and just fixes it like magic. It's just amazing. So, Michael, congratulations, you do a wonderful thing, we really appreciate you being here.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you for not knocking on my door. All right.
Oh, give me something. Oh, look at this.
And to get an apple. Don't eat this one. Yes. Congratulations.
John and Michael, I have a project for you later. Okay, I want to thank Quinn and Michael for all of their dedication to the work they do for the district, and we appreciate you very much. Thank you. Okay, are we moving on, Ms. Daley? Okay, great. So, we will go now to announcements. Are there any announcements, board members?
I have one.
Yes.
I would just like to make a note that I had the opportunity, I don't know why I'm buzzing, I had the incredible opportunity last night to attend the play Aladdin Junior that was performed by the students at Chico Junior High, and I just really need to do a shout-out to Teacher Sonia Husse, Husse, and the volunteers that helped put this on. The students were amazing, it was the most enjoyable play I have seen in so long, and I really want everyone to mark their calendars for the spring, when their next production comes up, they'll be doing Shrek Junior. It is not to be missed. It was incredible, so, thank you.
Okay, Kathy, did you have one?
No.
Okay. Eileen?
No.
All right, how about anybody in the audience? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. This is the time when we have items from the floor, so if anyone wanted to speak on something which does not appear on tonight's agenda, we allow time for that. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. The next item is a negotiations update. Mr. Hanlon.
Yes, so actually, because of the holidays, we only have a negotiations meeting once a month, and we are meeting with CUTA tomorrow and CSCA on Friday, so I have nothing new to report at this point.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Meretti, do you have anything to add? All right, thank you very much. Our next item is going to be the consent calendar, and I'm going to ask if anyone would like to pull an item. Yes, Eileen?
Yes, I'd like to pull ten point four point two.
Anyone else? All righty, and I am going to pull item ten point three point one. May I have a motion regarding the remainder of the calendar?
I'd like to move approval of the remainder of the consent calendar.
May I have a second?
Oh, I'll second.
Okay, a second by Ms. Robinson. We will vote...
Madam President, I'm sorry, excuse me, I was temporarily asleep. We also need to pull the approval of the minutes, ten point one point one.
Okay. All righty, I've got that. So, I have the items that we are going to pull as ten point one point one, ten point three point one, and ten point four point two. Oh, yeah, okay, and then we will also pull ten point five point one, because one of the board members needs to recuse on that. Okay, that sounds good. So, the remainder of the consent items, all those in favor of approving, please say aye. Aye. Okay, so we'll go back to ten point one point one. Eileen?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I need to abstain from approval of those minutes, because I was not present at that meeting.
Okay, for all others, we will vote on approval of ten point one point one. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
I think we need a motion. I'll make that motion in a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I'll motion. Dr. Kaiser, a second.
That was on a motion from Ms. Hovey, and a second from Ms. Kaiser, and so, all those in favor, then, again? Aye. Aye. Okay, sorry about that. Then we move to ten point three point one, and this is one where I am going to recuse myself, and because I do have an item that I have a personal interest in, so, can we get a motion on that?
I'll move ten point three point one.
I'll second.
All righty, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Okay, that passes as well. Ten point four point two, I believe that, Mr. Hanlon, were you going to discuss that?
Yes, we need to remove, or table at this point, any action regarding employee ID number three-one-three-four for a later meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. We will then remove that from consideration at this time. Item ten point five point one.
Madam President?
We did.
No, we...
No, we haven't yet.
I move approval of the remaining classified personnel actions.
Second.
Okay. Okay, that was just one portion. That was just one second pertaining to that one employee.
It was by employee identification number.
Ms. Griffin? You do need to vote to table it.
Okay, we do need to vote to table it.
Correct.
Okay, so this will be the vote to table it. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. And we did have a motion on that already, correct? Erica?
Voted to table ten point four point two regarding employee, the employee number.
I'm sorry, I'm leading to the confusion of this. Okay, so now we will vote on the remainder of that item, that does not pertain to that particular employee.
And we have a motion.
And we have a motion, that was, who? Eileen?
And I seconded.
Made the motion, and Kathy Kaiser seconded. All right. All those in favor, please say aye. 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 Okay. Now, were y'all straight on that? Okay, good. Then let's move to...
Madam President, I believe that that needs to be a roll-call vote, because the ten point three point one was not a unanimous vote.
Okay, Griffin, aye.
Kaiser, aye.
Robinson, aye.
Hovey, aye.
Okay, okay. We're doing things funny tonight. All righty, so now we will move to item ten point five point one, and Eileen is going to recuse herself from that, because it involves her, and so, can I have a motion on that?
I move ten point five point one.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, is that another roll-call, or no? We don't have to do that.
It's the vote following a non-unanimous vote that requires a roll-call.
Okay, so the, all right. Okay, so we're good, then. So, that dispenses with the consent calendar. Now, we will then move on to our educational services calendar, and the first item is item eleven point one point one, which has to do with the public hearing and discussion with regards to the renewal of the Forest Ranch Charter School. Ms. Keen?
Good evening, Board, Chico Unified Staff, Forest Ranch Charter Students and Staff, and other friends. Forest Ranch Charter School is in the charter renewal process. As part of that process, a public hearing must be held. Tonight, we are holding that public hearing, and at this time, I'd like to invite Kristia Marasco, Executive Director of Forest Ranch Charter School, to join me up here.
I have some friends that are going to join me.
Good evening. My name's Jody Cornellson, I'm the Lead Petitioner and Board President of Forest Ranch Charter School, excuse me, Board Chair. Thank you for allowing us to present our school charter petition this evening. We have a couple of speakers, including students, who would like to speak, and I think we're going to start with Kristia.
To start?
Sorry, excuse me, Bodhi, to start.
Hi, I'm Bodhi O'Rear. I am the FRCS Student Body President, and this is some of our leadership team, and...
I'm Ally, and I am Elementary President.
We have brought some letters of support from community teachers, parents, and students. We also have a short video, so you can see our school.
Thank you so much.
Parents and teachers agree, FRCS is a smart choice for your child's education.
As soon as we moved Ruby to FRCS, we knew that was the place she should be. She is truly thriving up here.
Yeah, we live in Chico, and with our busy work schedules, the bus has been a real lifesaver getting our kids safely up to school and back.
As an FRCS team, we're trying to help students individually to help them develop their fullest potential.
So, come join the FRCS family, and let your child be inspired.
Okay, so, I just want to take a moment before my students speak and tell you about our last charter renewal period. Amongst our greatest achievements in the last four years, I guess we're on the fifth year, has been the development of a successful middle school. In addition, we've had significant academic gains as a whole school, and also in our singular significant subgroup. According to Ed Code, academic achievement for all groups of people served is the most important factor for charter renewal. So, I'm going to take a moment to show you our academic gains. Okay, Forest Ranch Charter School has consistently met this requirement since our opening in 2008. During this last chartering period, we have steadily increased Sback scores and improved on the California... These graphs show steady improvement from 2015 to 2019 in relation to district, county, and state averages, with an overall increase of twenty-three percent in ELA from 2015 to 2019, and fifteen percent in math from 2015 to 2019. I can also provide comparables to other similar schools in the area. At this point in time, I believe we're third highest overall in English, and I think we're fourth in math, and we are equal or surpassing schools that are similar in the area. And I've passed out to all of you at table with dashboard information from 2016-17 and the 17-18 school year. This is just a small snapshot of that, but the other information has district as well as state comparables on there. We are also meeting or exceeding other area schools' state averages in that area, and making significant improvements in reducing the achievement gap. Thank you, and I'd now like to introduce some of my students, let you hear from a few of our students, and one of our alumni.
Hello, everyone, and good evening. My name is Zoshun Yemshnovich, I'm in the eighth grade, and I think this school is amazing. For me, a great school has to consist of the following aspects. First, I have to feel a sense of community. At FRCS, they display this, that students aren't numbers, but people. For example, I wouldn't hang out with people only my age as an adult. Because my school is so small, which isn't a bad thing, I got to make friends with all ages. Another great thing that ties into small classrooms is I have to be challenged. With my school, the teachers are able to coordinate better, to adapt to everyone's personal needs. At other schools, I've had trouble being able to get someone to help with a problem or on, on or off campus with a, or with a student, et cetera, but not with my school. Another great thing FRCS has to offer is the theater aspect. It offers students to sing, dance, and perform. With this aspect, I've learned to love singing, and I have better found myself as a person, thanks to this school. Thank you for your time.
Hi, everyone, I'm Sybil. I'm in seventh grade right now, and ever since I was in kindergarten, FRCS has been a wonderful learning environment for all of my friends and I. Although I can't compare it to any other school, many of my friends came up here looking for a change and got it. Involved activities such as hands-on assignments, study field trips, and amazing leadership opportunities let us expand our ways of learning and thinking. Last Saturday, we hosted a dinner showcase that displayed different students' interests, such as robotics, dance, and musical talents. The showcase was almost 100% planned and organized by our FRCS student leadership team. Doing this made every single one of us innovate and think outside of the box. Going to a small school really makes everyone feel like a community and involved with each other. Ever since I was very young, I've known many of the teachers that work at the school, all of which have been very welcoming and kind. Me and my fellow students are always working together, making it easier to understand one another and learn. I feel, as well as I'm sure you guys can agree, that... I feel, as well as I'm sure you guys can agree, that it's when you know each other, then it's easier to work together and get all your work done. I'm confident in saying that I would not be the same person right now, I am right now if I didn't go to FRCS. The caring staff and faculty have made me and every other student into a hard-working, kind family. Please consider Forest Ranch Charter School's charter petition. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name's Sebastian Pounders, a former student of Forest Ranch Charter School, and of 2020, I'm a high school graduate of Pleasant Valley High School. I have been at Forest Ranch Charter School since my fourth grade, and I came here to explain why they should be open another year. And when I have moved from Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, I came to the school not knowing what a friendly environment was because they never treated me right. But when I came there, they had very friendly staff and teachers and students as well. And I was very academically challenged, and through that time, they have showed me different ways to overcome them. And that's part of the reason why I'm the graduate I am to now. Another thing, let me see here. Oh, yeah. So I was also very socially closed. I did not talk at all. I was very by myself and very scared to talk to other people. And when I came to that school, I was overcome with kindness and love from other people, and the teachers knew that I had that challenge faced with me. And then I became the social butterfly I am today, of course, talking everybody's ear off, but you know. But yes, I want to thank you guys all for your time and letting me speak, and thank you.
Did you, did you say you're going to graduate in 2020?
Yes, I'm from Pleasant Valley High School.
I thought you just jumped over something because I thought you said you already had, but.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, good. So we'll see you in May or June.
Thank you.
Hello again. Currently, my family and I live in Forest Ranch, and my daughter attends Forest Ranch Charter. It's a fifth grader. She's sitting down there. What makes Forest Ranch Charter a great school? Here are several examples. We've kind of heard from the students about that, but I wanted to tie it all together. Community, most importantly, is the community's support in need of a school in Forest Ranch. It is often the hub of the community, and we see more than just parents and children at our events. Not only does the community rally behind the school, but we have several families that come up from Chico that find Forest Ranch Charter to be a good fit. Academics. The academics are rigorous and are customized to fit each individual child's needs. Our test scores consistently show our growth and strengths in this area. Authentic leadership skills starts in the elementary grades and really builds throughout middle school. Last Saturday, as Sybil spoke, I got to see the showcase, the annual dinner showcase put on by the middle school leadership. I was really impressed with how organized they were and how they problem-solved throughout the evening because those things never go as planned. These skills are incredibly important to have as they go through their education and their adult lives. The whole child, this is my favorite. Our school focuses on making each child feel important, excuse me, important, and have the best opportunity to succeed. That doesn't always mean ELA and math. Sometimes that means what's happening at home and on the playground and in the classroom. Focusing on the whole child is really important to the school. Each student is cared for, and on numerous occasions while I'm volunteering, I see it. It's an amazing process, and one I'm glad my daughter's a part of. With these examples in mind and what the students talked about, thank you for considering our charter renewal petition. We are excited to continue providing a school in Forest Ranch and that community with your support. Thank you.
I know a couple of you have been up there before, but if you get a chance, we invite anybody who's interested, hopefully we'll have some power, it's getting better, to come up the hill and visit us and check out the campus. Do you have any questions?
Okay, we'll open this to questions, yes. Kathy?
I hear that everybody there loves school lunch.
Not so much, but we're working on it.
Okay. I was waiting for somebody to ask, oh my god, she knows. Yeah, okay. And then some of the issues that were noted was a lot of the trauma caused by two fires that you guys were rotating between. So is there a context in terms of feeling that the school isn't safe enough, or is it just what everybody went through as individuals, which of course, we're all dealing with?
I feel like last year, it wasn't so much the fires itself. We were evacuated for 10 days, but, and we were very fortunate to keep our community. You know, the fire was right there, and it, the wind blew it the other way. But over half my staff lived up on the ridge. So we were very, very impacted. It was a rough year. People were tired and people were burnt. I lost my middle school coordinator, my partner, who'd been working with me to kind of be another leader. It's hard at small schools. And so that brought on a lot of challenges. Our middle school coordinator was in and out most of the year, and then actually left emergently towards the end of the year. And when, you know, a coordinator of a large group like that leaves, I was trying to do a few jobs at the end of the year. We have rallied, and we are stronger, and we are back, but it was definitely, I think it's made. My teachers are sitting right over here, and I will tell you, over half my teaching staff has been there since the first couple of years. So we have really good continuity. So it was a big, it was a big loss, and a lot of them had a really hard year, and we've kind of stuck it out. I thought I was going to lose a few of them. I did not. We have a new, excellent middle school team, and we're just trying to rebuild. And if we can keep the power on, that's our big new challenge. We had 15 days of outages this year. We only missed three school days, and a few of them were on the weekend. But every single time it goes out, it's a new insurance claim. It's added a lot of new challenges for us. We are having a special meeting on Thursday to vote on a whole school generator, not just for our water tank, because with the temperatures getting low, and with being in the 21st century, we use technology, so going on, off, on, off for the whole first trimester isn't functional. So I think we'll overcome it, but again, definitely a challenge, and our families have been supportive.
I think you should look into putting in for different grants or foundation.
We tried.
Okay.
So we're continuing to try.
Yeah, but the other aspect of that is, you know, it is a story that I think the political environment needs to know.
I'm happy to put it out there anywhere. It's been a rough year. I'd be happy to, we've tried, and we were told that the average income in Forest Ranch was too high for the USDA one. And we're still waiting for North Valley Community Foundation. We have not heard back. So at this point, because of the catastrophic nature of it for our community, it's, people are already tired and burn out. A lot of relocate, relocated people from paradise, so the outages have been really hard on everyone. So I, right now, we're looking at bond money only because nothing's moving fast enough. But I'm hoping that one of those other things will come through in the meantime, as is my board. So sometimes small don't get noticed as much up in the rural areas, but we're trying.
Okay, other board questions? Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing then. Anyone who is in the audience who cares to comment on the public hearing may do so now. Seeing nobody wanting to comment, we will close the public hearing. Okay, this is an action item, and this is for renewal of the charter of Forest Ranch School. Is the board ready to make a motion? Oh, it's the next one? Oh, it appears as an action item on the calendar, I mean, on the agenda.
It, it does. I apologize for that. It, no, we are, this is the middle meeting.
Okay.
Next month.
Next time, okay.
At our next regular meeting, we will ask you to vote on it. Yes, thank you. In January, correct. Yes, as typical, Ed Services has reviewed the char, will have reviewed the charter in its entirety by then, and give you our update to that to help as you make your vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, that sounds good. Alright, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Forest Ranch. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, everyone, for coming and showing your support. That's, that's nice.
And I'm just going to throw in there that Erica is an alumni of Forest Ranch, so must do a great job.
Wait a minute, was that a positive?
Absolutely. Okay, then that was just a discussion and public hearing, and so now we will turn to an informational item from Mr. Sullivan on the kindergarten and transitional kindergarten.
Yeah, good evening. Thanks for letting me share for a couple of minutes about kindergarten. It is kindergarten registration season, so it's happening. We see the registrations pouring in. Actually, about 75 came in today, kind of looking at areas and see where they're at with it. But we made a couple of minor changes this year with our K registration. One of them, actually, I remember Lando brought it to our attention, was kind of an odd pattern that we've had forever. To apply to an alternative school, it was a one-day window, which made it very inaccessible. So we think the change we made have made it things more accessible for parents. We also put another step in there, I'll talk about in a second, about putting supports in place for those incoming kindergarteners as well. This one is more geared at, we expanded the window timeframe for families to apply to alternative schools because as we looked at it, it just was kind of crazy to think that we had to have families get there in one day to complete that application. So we expanded to about a five-week window. So as long as they get their application in and have it completed by January 7th, they are in the lottery for all those alternative schools to be considered as if they had done it in that one day.
Oh, that's great.
Form 10s will happen a couple of weeks after that, so we can start backfilling in any situations from there. So we think that five-week window makes it much more accessible for families to kind of, if they're interested in those programs, to apply for it and get in that same lottery pool as everybody else with it. So that, that just made a lot of sense to do those things.
Yes.
The other minor change we made was actually in our K registration form, we actually added a couple of questions on there to try to get a little bit of information from families, if they're willing to share it with us, about just how things are going for that child they're registering. So we put some questions on there about preschool experience, about any behavior concerns that the families are seeing at home with those children. We have a couple of five or six questions that kind of lead to getting some information about how things are going at home for them, with the intent being, we are going to run a K, I'm going to call it a front-loading K experience for those families in August. Those that are expressing that they have some concerns about some ups and downs with their children, we're going to invite them in about three weeks before the kindergarten school year starts and run through a little pre-kindergarten experience. We're going to hire some teachers in, have some counseling support available for families, and kind of do some parenting support for them. So they'll have about a three-week prior to K-starting trial run, which kind of the evidence we've seen, Kelly hooked us up with a nice research organization, and they saw some real positives from that of having these kids have those experiences. Do, I call it a front-loading to K experience, really, is what we're looking to do. And it also helps some of those kids, hopefully, and what we've seen from the research, they don't get off on the wrong foot and kind of stay in that wrong track, if that makes any sense. So we think with some of these experiences, we can help steer some of them into a good experience right out of the chute and keep it going that way as well. So we're excited to see how that goes. And I was a little unsure if families would self-check that, yes, my child's having difficulties at home. Several have been checking those boxes. So we've got something set up in a couple of months. We'll start calling them all, inviting them in, kind of explaining what we're doing, and see how that goes in August. It'll be our first time trying it. We think it's worth giving it a shot and see how it goes. So any questions about anything?
Any questions? Yes, Kathy?
Well, the big one will be, are you ready for mine?
Which boxes do we check on registration?
Better be a good teacher. But the context of this, I thought this was extremely a positive aspect because I know when, when his older brother was registering, you could tell a significant difference between kids who had had some kind of preschool experience. And actually, the parents are more of a problem. But the parents and the kids who had not, they were so apprehensive. It was, it really, you know, you could see that that was, the kids who had been there, they just went right through. So I think this is a wonderful thing to bring in. And I totally agree that what we were seeing is that how that, how the kids and the parents responded early in the school year really affects how the class goes.
I hope, you know, if they walk in, they kind of know how to be a kindergartner.
Right.
Kind of understand someone's routines and patterns and just what it's all about. Lot more likely to get off on a good foot, like I said, and have a good experience day one.
I just, I thought it was an excellent move. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Okay, yeah, oh, wait a second there. You know, this is like my pet area, so I got to ask you some more questions. So is there a provision at all for indicating whether the children are English language learners?
They, they, excuse me, all of them put that on the registration forms. They fill out a home language survey?
So will we be also having those students come for this prior-to-school introductory session?
And once again, the, the front-loaded kindergarten experience, it's for families that are kind of self-sharing with us that they haven't had a preschool experience, or perhaps concerns about some behaviors happening at home. So it's not open to everybody. It's really open to that target. But so if families that speak other languages are checking that box, we're going to invite them in absolutely.
Okay, that's, that's excellent. Okay, I just think this is fabulous. I would really like to see some data collection on this as far as longitudinally what happens to these kids later on. If we see improvement with their, you know, being able to integrate better into the kindergarten classes, and if that is helping to close the achievement gap, which I suspect it will.
One of our big indicators is going to be, this is going to sound silly, but no news is good news. If they integrate in and are on track and doing really well, that, in no way, that's kind of mission accomplished.
Yeah.
As far as getting, be able to get them in and off to on the right foot with those things.
Yeah, this is, that's fantastic. Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks very much.
Okay, that was information only. So we will move on to 11.2, which is a discussion-action item regarding the facilities master plan. Ms. Kissel?
And Ms. Griffin, before we go on to that, I feel I'm remiss that we did not introduce during the negotiations portion our CSCA President Lori Sullivan. So Lori Wave, she has agreed to join us at the meetings as the President of CSCA. So, welcome and thanks for being here.
I am very sorry for omitting that. And it was Lori? Lori, thank you.
Lori Sullivan.
Lori Sullivan. Thank you, Lori, and I look forward to seeing you in the future. And we will ask you for your input, if you have any, in the future. Okay, Ms. Kissel?
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick, for loading that up for us. Good evening, and, and thank you for having us here tonight. All four of you have played a very significant role in the development of the facilities master plan that we started on after we passed Measure E in 2012, and we've updated two times since then. The better part of this year has been spent working on updating our enrollment information, our demographic analysis, and having a really good look at how that data changes our approach to the master plan. And we've had several meetings with administrative staff and our facilities committee, as well as the DLC groups from the elementary and secondary levels. And we have IEP Squared, who is our consultant here tonight, Ellen Mahia Hooper, and Tim Haley to do a presentation for you on the updated changes to the master plan. We have a short presentation. It's very informal. Please feel free to interrupt and ask questions. You all have a copy of the update. And if there are any questions or required changes that you have, we'll be happy to incorporate them, yes?
Yeah, I just want to jump in before we start. So is that going to include the material on the educational specs?
Yes, it will.
Okay, excellent.
It was, it was added when we initially established the master plan, but it's definitely been made to be more robust now that we've learned a lot, going through the alterations that we've done to buildings and the planning and programming processes that we've gone through. We've learned an awful lot about what the facility needs to be to incorporate the educational program. So it's a, it's a much more significant document now, and it will be added.
Before you run your show, I wanted to congratulate Marie on her promotion. And I also wanted to note that I thought the district's educational specifications were so much more robust than anything we had seen before, and really extremely helpful framework to put the, it's like before, I think we were doing the buildings and then sticking the kids in, and this is like taking the kids, now put those in the building. So I just tremendously appreciate that turn in directions. Thank you.
Like I said, we have. Like I said, we have, we have learned a lot, and we do have a lot of learning left to do. We have a lot of improving to continue to do, but thank you for that. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Ellen.
Good evening. Thank you for having us again. This has always been a fun process. We love coming back and updating master plans and seeing how the districts grow and change and things get built. And it's always really, really a nice, nice to come to Chico. The major changes we have, or the agenda for tonight are major changes. The schedule changes, the two high school plans, because there were some adjustments with both the athletics and the CTE programs, which congratulations on your winning or being selected for those grants. And also Inspire moving eventually to another site. And then we have the update of the educational specifications. So the major changes we have are, the big one is McManus moved up to Phase Four and Rosedale moved back to Phase Five. This was in reaction to the demographic changes and some of the pressures at the elementary school and the ability for that campus to expand and become more attractive, to handle more children, and maybe take a little bit of that pressure off. You're not quite to the point where you should be panicking, but the elementary capacities are still high. So, or enrollments are still high compared to the capacity. So we want to keep an eye on that, and that was part of that adjustment. Updating the process for calculating capacities. So before we compared it to your demographic projections provided by King Consulting, we redid the way we calculated capacity on the school sites. It's a much more transparent piece, and I will be happy to hand it off to Maria because it's now a live spreadsheet. So every year, if you, God forbid, have to add a portable or make some other facility adjustments, they can be updated by your staff. And like I said, it's a much more transparent way of how we're doing the pull-out spaces, which is always tricky at the elementary school site. And it also lets you control how many rooms you discount for charter schools. So that's another important aspect that changes potentially on a yearly basis. We show the results of the first three phases and what else you've been doing in your schools for improving your facilities. So we updated the assessment scores to reflect the work you've been doing. As I stated in the agenda, we've updated the high school master plans, which we'll go over, and the educational specifications. So this chart shows how the assessment scores have been updated. The original blue lines that you see, the columns, are what the assessment combined score was back at the original master plan in 2013. That combined score, I'll remind you, includes four different, actually five different scores. So it has building function and building condition, site function and site condition, and technology. Technology was actually one of the areas that went up significantly because you have done a bunch of work in your infrastructure. We also had the Measure K and Measure E projects that are obviously your big construction projects. That's where you see the massive jumps, like Loma Vista, which was your lowest-scoring school, is now among your highest-scoring schools. So those are the big jump ones. But you'll also notice that all the campuses have been touched. That's partly because of technology, but Prop thirty-nine and other maintenance projects have gone through to be able to bring up the scores to all the campuses.
Ellen, can I just jump in on that for a moment?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to point out, this also speaks to the fact that we've really put dollars that aren't bond dollars into improving facilities. Routine restricted maintenance. And if you look at some of the schools, Chapman Citrus, that are further away because of demographics, those have also improved dramatically. So I think it really speaks to a collaboration between our maintenance department and our facilities department to raise these scores overall for all kids across the district.
Next one, implementation timeline. So this, this shows the adjustments that have been made. I'm going to go on to the next slide because we zoom in to post closer to where we are today. The, as you can see, we've got some projects still in construction, such as Emma Wilson and Loma Vista Marigold is finishing up, Neil Dow is moving along. But we have some that are starting now, which are new to some level, which is the PV High School, which has incorporated that CTE program. We also have one for Chico High that is, again, that CTE grant. You'll see that McManus is now pulled up into the Phase Four. Then we also have Hooker Oak and Sierra View, which were already part of Phase Four. Rosedale is now in Phase Five. The overall construction has been pulled a little further out to reflect some of the knowns about your funding. But as always, the implementation plan is dependent on things beyond the district's control as far as your funding availability and state match and those other factors. So while we give dates on this, you always have to be aware that, that it is dependent on, on different factors, including bond sales and issuances, as well as state match.
Can I?
Yes.
Thank you. On page, let's see, on our report, under utilization, facilities utilization. What I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to connect the relationship between the, the schools on the chart going out the ten-year projected utilization, and some are way over one hundred percent, but are, were not the ones moved up in the, and I'm looking at McManus and Chapman.
So Chapman is a special case, just to clarify Chapman. The reason it's over one hundred percent is we cleared out, or we took out of the capacity calculation any room that is being currently used by a charter school, which a significant number of those classrooms are being used by a charter school. So that is really the reason, physically, you do have over-sufficient number of classrooms on that campus for the program. It's just that the cooccupation has tightened up the capacity there.
Yeah, see, there wasn't an explanation, and I was trying to make some connection between what was being recommended and what was on that chart. Thank you.
Yes. The other thing that we created, which I forgot to mention earlier, is when we recalculated the capacity, we created two capacity levels. We created the target and the maximum. And the target has a few pieces in there that allow some comfort on the school site. And so it's the difference between comfortably full and overstuffed, right? Technically, you can get up to the maximum capacity, but there will probably be people standing up here telling you that they're unhappy if they made it all the way up to the maximum capacity. But it doesn't, but there is technically that room available. So, and it's much more reflective of reality. We all know that very rarely is there that point where you get one more student and you just can't fit them, right? It's always like, well, we could technically adjust the class size. We, we could technically take over the music room. There's these other components that affect the program, but doesn't leave somebody out in the street, right? And so that, that band of capacity is really a more appropriate way to look at it. So moving on to the next slide, we have PVHS. So part of our meetings that we conducted to do this update was included meeting with the athletic directors and the principals of both high schools. For PVHS, one of the changes that they made from the athletics master plan was to not relocate the tennis courts. But we kind of expanded their current footprint, gave them more space between, which was the major complaint of where they are. But the, the school would like to keep more of the grass fields open for PE use. And so this accomplishes that. So you'll notice that, that change. The other major change, of course, is the, now we have the architectural plans for the new multipurpose room and where the administration's going with the remodel of Valhalla. So we reflected that into the overall plan, since that's going to soon be a reality. So moving on to, Chico High School had major adjustments because of the removal of Inspire in the master plan. And so, and also they had adjustments that they wanted to make in the athletic master plan. The softball fields realigned, which adjusted the parking lot to kind of expand into where Inspire is today. The fieldhouse got moved from the street side of the stadium a little bit more in, into the campus so that it could be utilized by more sports than just who uses the stadium. So that's a really positive move because it'll be more multi-use and hopefully utilized throughout more of the various seasons, which is always a good thing. Besides that, we've also added a few additional buildings with B1 and C1. Those have not been programmed, but we're withholding the footprint to be able to show that that's, that space open, that could possibly house potentially other CTE programs or other educational facilities.
In the plan, was there a timeline or a date set for the Inspire move? I mean?
No.
Okay.
All right, so Chico, moving on to the district educational specifications. As Julie stated, we met with both of the DLCs and had really great meetings there. Also talked with each department, special ed, kitchens, nutrition, maintenance. So we went through and met with the various people affected and updated our original guidelines. The good news about turning them to formal specifications is it's one more checkbox towards what you need for CDE anyways. And so we updated and have included more items. Also, we've incorporated some of the lesson-learn pieces that are really kind of details, but they're important things to note to, to architects when they start so that they don't get lost, like which sinks have hot water and bathroom accessories, which is always the exciting meeting. So we, we did all of those kind of things. Yes?
So we just came from CSBA, and it appeared that the push to have a gender-neutral bathroom was pretty strong. And in your presentation, it was like, wasn't said, yeah, you need that. It was just like, maybe, or could be, or. So, and it was the same for the staff. I thought one of our approaches to gender-neutral was to make it something that either staff or students could use.
Right, we've been incorporating a gender-neutral restroom in every project that we've tackled. And we intend to continue to do so.
Okay, but it's not in the specs. That's what I'm saying, it's optional.
That's a good point, and we will make sure that that is corrected.
Thank you.
There's also a new requirement by DSA that every single-use toilet is identified as a gender-neutral, so. The other things about the core classroom changes is there was more connections between the classroom spaces and support spaces, talking a little bit more specifically about what breakout spaces should look like. And when you do small rooms and what those small rooms needed to house, we were, we were much more clear on that. And we had a really great discussion with the teaching staff about what, what those should be and how they can be utilized, which is super important for getting them utilized. We also talked a lot about flexible furniture. And one companion piece that probably won't come to the board because every time furniture changes, you would have to come back. But the furniture standard is also being developed.
That furniture standard was another thing that I noticed, along with what Kathy had noticed. We've had very positive feedback about some of the furniture that you can sit on, that rocks, that tilts, that moves, so that the child is not having to just sit and not be able to wiggle, which we all know is really important for all of our kids at all grade levels. Is there a way of highlighting that philosophy in your ed specs?
Yes.
I'm glad you brought that up because it's become a very important topic for me personally. It's kind of my mission right now to try to incorporate those kind, that kind of flexibility and student choice in the classroom. So multiple places to sit, either sitting on the floor or a stand-up table or at a traditional desk, if that's what they prefer, and the wobbly stools and different options for students. I think we've come a long way with our furniture standard, but we're not, we're not satisfied yet, and we need to keep working on it. We've been having discussions, Maria and I have, with Emma Wilson Elementary School because that's the next school that's gonna be furnished, trying to poll the teachers there to see what's palatable to them because some of that change is kind of scary. And they seem to be very willing to go a little bit more flexible than what we've done recently. So we're really tackling that right now. But I appreciate you making those comments because we've been in conferences where we're learning the same things, and we want to be able to give the best to our kiddos.
Two of the California School Boards Association Conference pullouts that I attended, one regarding social-emotional health and the other regarding considering special education as a general education student first, both highlighted the importance of, of the movement issue for students, both standing, sitting, wiggling, and that the almost immediate impact of test scores and, and success rates academically, as well as behaviorally, that the behaviors in classrooms was considerably improved by just the furnishing, furnishings? Yeah, you know what I mean.
Yeah, we had a, we don't have any hard data on it, but we were reported back to a principal in another district. We helped them change out sixteen classes in a middle school with different furniture, and we put new whiteboards and things on the walls and redid the carpeting in their portable classrooms. And the rest of the remaining school was exactly the same as it's always been. And the same kids that are going through both, both sides of, you know, they transferred classes on both the interior and out in the portables. And he had significant drop in the referrals to the principal's office on the, the classes that were redone versus the ones that were not. And we had a variety of seating and wobble stools and standing and all of that within those classrooms. So it was really, it was really nice to hear that. That was, that just happened this year, so. It is very important. And we, we did talk generally in the ed spec about furniture, but because we knew that we were gonna have this companion piece to it, we didn't go too in-depth into the furniture front. But, but it'll definitely be noted in the, in the furniture one. So that was, yep, that was the end. So in case additional comments?
I just, the other thing I noticed was in the drawing up of the rooms where there would be a shared space or access to outside play areas or interaction areas. I really appreciated both the attention to safety, but also that kids in a set of classrooms could go in and out and not disturb everybody else. I don't know what you're gonna do with mine, put something over his mouth or what. But, you know, it was noted that when kids are, that when they're interacting, they're gonna make noise. And I thought that was a really good observation. Instead of trying to make everything outside be...
Instead of trying to make everything outside be quieter, uh, is to let them have, but the safety issue was also really, uh, significant and that was of course something we all, we all are concerned about, so, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so we are asking for you to adopt this master plan update tonight and, um, if there's any changes that you request, um, we could incorporate them.
Okay. Uh, any further questions? Yes, Eileen?
Uh, I don't have any questions, but when you talk about changes, um, I, I think both the, the issues that Dr. Kaiser brought up and the gender neutral, that we make it, um, an, an on-purpose stated goal policy in our, in our buildings and the issue of combining, um, furnishings with the, um, advantages that we see in behaviors and learning for general ed and students that may also be in those classrooms with their peers, but identified as special ed because that was the combination that was really seeing some significant benefits was the, um, the population that's, that's mainstreamed together.
If I could also just jump in to the board, I just want to stress how important this document is. It's a document that is not only in use by staff that we use almost on a daily basis, but it communicates to our public that we have a plan, we're using their taxpayer dollars wisely and we're having an impact in improving schools. So I just can't stress again how important this document is.
So I'm assuming your answer is yes?
Yes.
I move, uh, 11.2.1.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Uh, do we have any further discussion from the board? Any further discussion from the audience? Okay, all those in favor, please say. Okay, all those in favor, we are going to do a roll call vote. Griffin, aye.
Hovey, aye.
Kaiser, aye.
Robinson, aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much for all your hard work. We appreciate that. Okay, we'll go on to our next item, which has to do with the charter schools' Measure K projects. And again, I believe that's Ms. Kissel.
Drive safely. Thank you. Okay, so the Measure K Charter Facility Committee has been active again and they have brought forward a project, uh, for Sherwood Montessori School. As you know, the home that was on their private property adjacent to Chapman, um, had to be demolished, um, when we did the construction project there this last summer. So that building, uh, was necessary for their program and they're going to, um, they want to put another portable in that location. So they're asking for the $366,379 to be authorized, uh, for this project.
Uh, Julie?
Yes.
I can't find it right now, but I, when I read through this, the first time that they're using, um, this portable installation to do their, um, cooking classroom, uh...
Yes, it will have a cooking kitchen in it.
I know that's a big part of their curriculum.
Yes. It will be for other uses as well, but that will be one of the uses.
Would you, uh, just with the language, uh, you did already clarify this in a, I think an email exchange, but this isn't actually a loan. It's moving some monies over from one of the charters to the other, right?
Correct.
How, I don't know how we would identify it, but...
The Charter School Facility, Measure K Charter School Facility Committee, uh, early on divided up their 15.34% of Measure K funds, uh, based on ADA, actually, of each of the charter schools that were in operation in the city at the time. And, and that was their decision of how they were going to divvy up those dollars. Uh, so it's discussed in the language from the committee as a loan of one charter school to the other if necessary, but to us, it's, it's just Measure K dollars.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you. Um, with that, I would move, are we going to do it one by one or are we going to do the group? Because you have Inspire and...
Oh, um, the other, um, I'm sorry, I failed to mention the other was a return funds.
Oh, a refund.
Underspent funds for Inspire, so we can do them both together.
Okay. So with that, then I move, what's the number here? I move 11.2.2.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Kaiser, a second by Linda Hovey. Uh, any further discussion on this? Any comments from the audience? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kissel. Okay, before, Jaclyn, before you come up, I'm going to request that we take about a five to, five-minute or so comfort break and we will be back in five minutes. Thank you.
Okay, I'm okay, actually.
Okay, I'm gonna call us back to order again. And we will continue with item 11.2.3, which has to do with the independent financial audit. Ms. Krueger?
Yes.
Hello?
Good evening, Board. So every year, school districts and charter schools are required to do an independent financial audit. It has to be filed at the State Controller's Office by December 15th. And I will say, we are early this year. We made it for the December Board meeting, because normally, I'm here in January. Again, this is an audit I'm here representing, but it's all the staff at our school sites, at the district office, that are able to get the information to the auditors in a timely manner respectfully. They turn it around, and then we can make it to the December Board meeting. So I'm very happy about that. It's the first time since I've been at Chico Unified, we've been able to do it. I will say, there's a couple of things. The management letter from the auditor is always a great one to read. It talks about kind of the district's behavior and working with the auditors, and they make comments about that. Or, lack of comments if there's no issues there. It is a fairly large report. There's probably two pages I would point out in particular. Page 58 is a schedule of financial trends and analysis. So what I like about this page is big picture summary. Here's the district for multiple years in a row to look at trends, revenues, expenditures, our fund balance, our long-term debt. So it's kind of a snapshot of the district as a whole, and also gives our attendance there as well. So you can see, because of all the one-time money we've received in the last five years from our governor, that our fund balance will surplus drastically one year, and then it looks like we're massively deficit spending the next year. That's really a function of the one-time money, of when we receive it versus when we spend it. The other piece that you're probably dying to know are the findings. We had no financial findings, which is great. So the numbers that Marie and I presented in October, those stand. So moving forward to make decisions programmatically, compensation, et cetera, those numbers are all valid and sound. We did have two compliance findings. One was related to attendance in our before-school program, related to the after-school program. That is basically clerical. It's a manual process. We're working really hard to try to automate it. We haven't come up with any solutions, but we talk about it every single year, because it's just a very, very manual process. In our after-school program, kids have cards, and they swipe in and out, and so we've never had an issue with our attendance in the after-school program, because it's automated. So we're trying to figure out a solution for that before-school program. The other finding that we had was related to our SARC, or School Accountability Report Card. So the information on that report card needs to match our FIT, our Facility Inspection Tool. And we had one school that the values for the different types of facilities were slightly off. So, again, really a clerical error is what the auditors are describing that as. I've implemented a process this year where someone in my office will actually be reviewing every single FIT, so that it matches the SARC, before it comes to you in January and posted on our website in February. So I'm optimistic that won't be a finding next year.
I was impressed that neither one of these had a financial context to them. But the other side of it is, it seems like it's putting a lot of extra pressure on the clerical staff at a school to do something that's more technical than what they're normally responsible for. I mean, not the before-school, but you know, that whole thing about, well, this didn't fit that. And so, I really do hope that we can provide them a little bit more support. So that's good.
Yeah. So I think a second set of eyes to double-check, because we're all human at the end of the day. So I think that will hopefully resolve that issue. It's not Kevin. You're fine. And I will say, this is our last year at Tiddle, so we will be coming back in the spring. We're going out for proposals for audit services in January and February. We'll be back in the spring with a recommendation. So I just ask this evening that you approve our 1819 annual audit.
I'd like to move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion by the Board?
I would just like to congratulate the staff, all of you in the Financial and Business Services Department, as well as, you stated, everyone at the school sites. Well done. Well done.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
When the auditor says, "You're both polite, responsible, but accurate," that's like, "Oh."
Okay, so then, we will call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right, next up will be Mr. Boltima with the first interim budget.
Nothing clears out a room like a budget report. I almost feel like I could just, you know, pull this around the table and go over this. And you know this, you've looked at this. Kevin, we're gonna be going over it tomorrow morning, so I hate to bore you. So I will go kind of fast, because I think it's very consistent to what you've seen before, and if you have a question, I know you will hold me up. So, bottom line is, numbers will change at first interim budget, and often substantially from original budget, because now we have all the carryover dollars. As a reminder, the state budget gets approved often after we even approve our original budget, or at least put it together. And then we do have to self-certify as a district of whether or not we'll be a positive certification, qualified or negative. Positive, we will meet all of our obligations; qualified, may not; and then negative is will not. So the major themes are very consistent to what we've seen over the past couple of years. One-time money and carryover dollars, as Jaclyn mentioned earlier, are really changing our fund balance numbers, and our change in fund balance numbers relatively dramatically, and can kind of hide what's really happening underneath operationally. Enrollment and average daily attendance projections are even more important now, and even less mathematical accurate because of the campfire and just the change we've seen in enrollment in our district and districts around us. And then this is the last year, 1920, of a three-year, multi-year compensation agreement with all of our bargaining units. So in the multi-year, you won't see any compensation increases included in those projections. And then the PERS and STIRS costs continue to go up. What we attempted to do here was to take every year of our one-time money and consolidate those, before we kind of presented them as a slide each time, really emphasizing this surplus one year and deficit spending the next, and surplus in the next year. I think what you can really gather from this is that we've received one-time money in almost every year, in some fashion, since 2015, '16, and we've been able to push those dollars out over a number of years to really serve kids, utilizing those dollars in ways that have many years of benefit. And it also certainly has an impact to the bottom line, is we're using, receiving those dollars, and then spending them at different times. So enrollment's very important at this point in time, and I just wanted to point out, 1819, if you look at that attendance percentage, it's somewhat in the middle at 96.46. That is substantially higher than what our normal is, around 95.5. But that's because we took enrollment before campfire, and then our ADA, or Average Daily Attendance, we had those kids certainly for the second part of the last year. So then going into next year, or the current year, 1920, we are estimating an enrollment increase of 153. But you'll notice that ADA number change is relatively small at 28, but again, that's because we're comparing different data points, right? So then we're estimating in 2021, and then in 2122, that we're actually gonna decrease slightly next year, and then have a very, very slight increase in the next. Now, I will say, for full transparency, we have traditionally used three-year averaging to be a good predictor of what's gonna happen in the future. But I think the campfires changed that. We saw that last year, when we actually received about 300 more students, but we really looked for the 1920 year and said, "We don't think we're gonna keep all those kids." And that really came to fruition. We really held on to almost a third of those kids. Some might have said that was conservative, but it proved to be pretty accurate. So we've kind of done the same thing into the 1920 year, still believing that this increase that we received in the current year still is in flux, maybe making different decisions over the next summer. And again, we were only showing small increases before we had the impact of the campfire. Once those were accelerated in the last year and this year, we believe there's gonna be a down in that year. It also is a more conservative approach, because even though we're decreasing, we get to use the prior year ADA. So if we were to decrease, we're still at the same funding level we are this year. So this is just a graphical look at our enrollment versus our average daily attendance, and you can see that kind of leveling off, and this nice kind of steady growth. Moving on to the major assumptions in this budget, the cost of living adjustment is 3.26. That's in the current year.
Yeah. We got told 1.79.
In the out-year. And we'll talk about that in the multi-year projection, and point out what we think might be the impact related to that change. Looking at the funded average daily attendance, we're at 11,837. That is, again, an increase of 28. I will tell you, our projection at original budget was for 14 ADA. So we have seen a slight increase in the funded ADA projection from where we were at original. We have given you enrollment reports, and a lot of those show that we were almost at 300 this year, and we've lost students all during the year. And that is true. But if you remember, the data point isn't what our first-day attendance is, it's often what our projection was to show, and it was pretty accurate. So we don't see, even though we lost kids during the year, this year, from first day, isn't having an impact for us financially. So our unduplicated account percentage is at 49.727. One-time funds, and this is important, are both revenue and expenditure, those are budgeted. And currently, we don't have a plan for how we're using those 1920 dollars. So when we show you those projections, if we don't spend those dollars, our numbers will get better. But again, it's one-time in nature, so we'll talk about that. Again, we are in the final year of a three-year compensation agreement. That is included at our first interim. We did not include it at original, because we didn't know the impact of the potential at original budget. Salaries and benefits, they reflect position control. That's where we just pull all the data out of the financial system for the rest of the year, and we project any vacancies for the rest of the year. So it's kind of a full load of our staffing. We do that as of the first part of November. And then again, STIRS and PERS continue to increase from the prior year.
Could I stop you there for a minute?
Yes.
In my travels at CSBA, I didn't catch the entire conversation, but, and I haven't kept up on the governor's budget, but I had heard that the governor, Governor Newsom, gave schools some money to put towards their PERS liability. Do you...
I thought they said that he took one-time money-
Yep.
...and stuck it in PERS.
Oh, at the state budget level, yes.
At the state level, it didn't go to the schools.
No. He, yes, he basically took at least a billion. I'm not sure the exact number, but I thought it was around a billion dollars, and put that into the-
To the state.
Correct. Which then changes the actuarial estimates of the increases that school districts will have to pay. So it did benefit us-
Correct.
-and it was probably a good use of state dollars.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah. So here's just a snapshot of the income statement, and these are scary numbers when you first see them. And you'll see on the unrestricted side of the budget, it shows a negative change of $4.4 million, stating that we're going to spend $4.4 million more dollars this year than we're receiving in revenue. And then the restricted side, it's estimated at 2.6, but I will point out, again, on the restricted side of the budget, most of that is carryover dollars for the most part, and we'll show that in our multi-year projection as well. Graphically, this is just how we spend our money. We've showed this pretty consistently. And then we just note at the bottom that if you take the unrestricted budget and you add in special ed, because special ed's almost $20 million of contribution from the general fund, we really are spending it, at this point, about 90% of our budget and salary and benefits in unrestricted and special ed. Our contributions to restricted programs, special ed is the largest one, at $18 million. Our routine restricted maintenance, RRMA, we're now required that 3% of our budget has to be spent in that area, 4.7. And then, you know, we just went through the federal program monitoring review, and they noted that there were some changes that we need to make in the way we're coding some of our salaries and benefits, specifically into some programs that require monthly PAR reports. So we may have to change the coding of some of those employees, which would actually impact the general fund, and we estimate right now that impact would be about $133,000. So transfers in from other funds, we do receive almost an over $3 million from the RDA pass-through revenues, and those will continue, we believe, in through 2047. And then Chico's gonna have a big problem, but hopefully by that time, we've figured out something that replaces these dollars. And then we have the developer fee administrative support of $125,000 from Fund 25, the developer fees. Yes?
So the whole county had a tremendous loss of property, so it was a fight, and then the state backed over it, but they don't continue to back over it.
Yes, but my understanding is for Chico Unified, within our district boundaries, it doesn't really impact our valuations. Certainly, Paradise Unified School District will be faced with that, but within our boundaries, we're not seeing that same impact.
In fact, our valuations are actually increasing.
And then the Nutrition Service Fund is $967,000. I will point out, Vince has been doing an outstanding job this year, and at some point, we want to come back to you with kind of an update on how we address the School Services report on nutrition services. But our meals are way up this year, dramatically. The problem and challenge we're having is related to the new laws on collections of debt. So as fast as we're increasing meals and increasing revenues, we're seeing bad debt with families who are not paying their bills, that are supposed to be paying their bills, and we're unable to collect those. We can't hire collection agencies, we can't, and we wouldn't, student, or shame a student for their acts of their parents. But we really can't collect those dollars or have any way of calling them on a regular basis to get it. So we're seeing our bad debt numbers go up dramatically as well, almost wiping out or offsetting those increased revenues.
In speaking with Vince, we're estimating between $200,000 and $250,000 this year in bad debt. Yeah, it's pretty significant.
Word on the street, you don't really have to pay?
There is some of that. There's some of that. In fact, there was an article in a paper in Southern California, and it was talking about the disparity of districts who are under that 55% free and reduced threshold, and we're right, we're at 49, 50%. They're being adversely impacted compared to districts who have maybe 70 or 80%, because we proportionally have more students who are paid, and we also, and then those students' families are choosing not to pay the negative balance. And you also have programs within the school nutrition program called CEP and Provision II, but those are only, you're only eligible for those if you have those 70 or 80% free and reduced counts. And so oftentimes, those are free meals for everyone. We actually have CEP, Community Eligibility Program, at several of our sites. So then the paid component comes out of it. So we're kind of, unfortunately, in the sweet spot, that's not so sweet, that we're being adversely impacted, and the bad debt's pretty significant.
Has anyone, you know, that's the first I've heard of something like that. I wonder if there's any other kind of strategies for, you know, helping alleviate this problem?
And we'll speak for Vince, but in my conversation with him, they send home letters, they do calls, parents just don't answer, and they don't return their calls.
Yeah.
They know their child is still going to get a hot meal, regardless if they pay the balance or not.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you for that.
Do you know if the pending legislation to make changes to eligibility for SNAP and the reimbursement for school lunches is going to have any impact on us, if it in fact is passed by the feds?
We've not run any analysis on that yet.
Okay. It, there's a big battle to keep it from going through, and I hope they're successful, because it's just, you know, people already can't eat.
Yeah. Okay. And then just looking at the unrestricted budget, because we think we owe you an explanation of where the numbers were at original, and when they are now being presented at first interim. We are seeing an increase in the LCFF revenue, almost $500,000, but this is an increase in the revenue due to county ADA. So Butte County Office of Ed changed its program step-up to LEED, and those ADA numbers are then run through our financials, and then we have to pay those dollars out to LEED. Correct. So our revenue's increased, but now we have a new expenditure. So it doesn't help our bottom line at all, but it does show increased revenue. And this was relatively new to us and unexpected, because of their change in designation. So federal dollars, we knew the Forest Reserves were going away at some point, not a big number. State revenue's up, because we've included the one-time money from the current year, which we didn't have at original. And then local revenue, we're seeing reimbursements for SELPA teachers and counselors. What we saw is that the basis program in Oroville needed to be up and running to provide an alternative setting for some special needs kids, and we basically provided teachers and counselors with reimbursement from the SELPA itself. Mainly, that was because they couldn't get up and running as quickly, and we had the trained staff to be able to do it. Expenditures, again, we did not have the salary increase at original budget, so you see all the increases in our certificated, classified, and employee benefit numbers. And our books and supplies go up, again, because we have our 1920 one-time money, plus carryover of site dollars, for instance, that they haven't spent. And same with services, most of those are carryover dollars as well. Other outgo, again, there's that county school pass-through that we talked about up above with the 544. There's some other offsets in there, but that's the bulk of the change in other outgo. And then our indirect costs will adjust as the carryover dollars come in as well, because that's actually an offset to expenditures. So you can see the change from, basically, a change in fund balance of a negative $200,000 to this change of negative $4.4 million. So the multi-year projection assumptions, 1920, '21, and '22 enrollment projections are based on estimates. We have moved away at this point in time from just mathematical projections, and have inserted some real estimates. We'd be honest about those and show how transparent we are, but it really drives down a negative change in enrollment of 10, and then an increase in '21 of 21 in the '21-'22 year. But because we aren't projecting any increased kids, we don't have any additional FTE for certificated staff. We do budget for all increased step and column costs, STIRS and PERS rates, inflation in utilities and fuel expenses. So we do have net changes for certificating classified retirement. So as we have retirees leave, we have savings, but then that step and column cost, they somewhat offset. But we are also open that we do include estimates of retiree savings as well. And then we look at the LCFF calculator, and this is to Dr. Kaiser's point. At the time we ran this, it was 3% and 2.8%. But I understand the out-year at 2.8 is now estimated at 1.7. So the bottom line is, that's just a reduction in revenue that we would not have in this calculation. So we have increased expenditures related to the implementation of All-Day K. We've been phasing that in, so those are included. And then, again, we're finally reached the final year of getting our operating budget up to $1 million for replacement of technology in the LCAP. So we'll have reached that goal, and that will be $1 million every year that's included. So this is our multi-year projection for the next three years, and I'll just cut to the kind of highlighted green line. Our estimated net increase or decrease in fund balance is a negative 4.4, a negative 2.8, and then a negative $1 million. The good news is that our beginning fund balance is $23 million. So then when you take a look at those negative dollars, but then you look at our reserve balances, we're able to make the 3% reserve requirement from the state, the 2% board reserve requirement, the additional 1819 one-time dollars that were put in board reserve, and then just the non-spendable reserves, which are stores' inventory and our prepaid expenditures and local cash. So even with these kind of scary numbers and changes, you can see even in the out-year, we still have an estimate of $4 million in fund balance. But as we talked about earlier, one-time money is masking some of what's happening here, so we try and get down to what is really happening operationally. So to do that, we take out all the one-time revenue, we take out all the one-time expenditures, and you see that our number goes down to a negative 3.3, a negative 2.9, and now a negative 1.2. But then our beginning fund balance number has to be less as well, because we don't have those one-time dollars in the fund balance. But even with that said, we're not that different than where we were before, that we're able to make all of our reserve requirements, and our ending fund balance is 3.8. So I think what this states is that we have good reserves. We've used those dollars wisely when we've received them, but we do have deficits now that are flowing through this budget, and some of that's certainly related to the compensation increase and prioritizing that with new dollars. So as we look to the out-years, we're going to need new dollars to really afford what we've done, and that's okay, because we have those reserves. But the priorities of deficit reduction needs to be at the front four, at the very front of our focus. And then we still haven't talked about any program enhancement dollars over the next couple of years. Now, I will also point out, and I think this is important, that the one-time money in 1920 is not included in this budget as ongoing. We have treated those as one-time dollars. And frankly, that's a game changer, because if those dollars become ongoing, all of a sudden, we're getting almost balanced in the out-year and having a much different conversation. So I just want to be very transparent about that, that this is using 1920 one-time dollars as just that. But we are hearing that there's quite a bit of movement with school services, that that would be really included as ongoing dollars in the governor's new budget. So we'll have to see that in the next few weeks. So we always point out the PERS and STIRS increases, they're real costs to us. We've been fortunate with LCFF to have increased revenues to offset this cost, but it is continued and estimated to increase. Now, STIRS actually has a decrease in the '21-'22 year, from 18.4 down to 18.1. So that will be a nice little change for STIRS, but our PERS costs continue to increase. So just going forward and kind of bottom line, it does show that we have deficit spending in all three years. And then if you take a look at the NYPD without the one-time money, we still have deficit spending. Again, we have the reserves to handle it, but it needs to be a priority as we move forward. The current year is the end of the three-year compensation, so we don't have any requirements or mandatory dollars going towards compensation in the out-years. But we continue to see the California economy perform well. I mean, I keep thinking that, you know, the recession's here. Kelly likes to give me a bad time, but I will be right at some point in time. And then really, our job now is to look at the 1920 budget. I'm sorry?
One of the things that we got hit over the head with at CSBA was that, yeah, everybody's predict, everybody, predictions of a downturn are still out there, and must be out there, because history says there will be. The scary thing was, when we were told that in order to adjust to a downturn, the very first place they will cut, again, is school finance. Just-
We're 40% of the state budget.
Yeah.
So it's very difficult for them not to. Now, the state is better positioned to deal with it. Their rainy day fund is fairly substantial, so we're in a much different place today than when we were in 2008. The district has good reserves right now. So I agree with you. I think there will be a downturn, a slow turn. But I would also point out, I believe this budget in the current year and even out-years, there's not a lot of risk here. In other words, we're not projecting increased enrollment that may not happen. We're very conservative in those enrollment reports. So what we're presenting to you is, in my opinion, really worst-case scenario. It's good to know, it's good information. Are things gonna get better? I think so, because let's be honest. I mean, we go back, and we're estimating this negative 3.3, but that's if we spend all of our one-time money in 1920. Well, that's $1.7 million that we currently don't have a plan for. So if we don't spend those dollars, that $3.3 million now becomes 1.4, 1.5. And then we know we have carryover at the sites level, about 500 to 1 million. So now we're getting close to break. So now we're getting close to break even. So this is the whole little kind of dance we do every time, where we say, hey, board, here's a deficit of $3 million related to one-time money and related to conservative projections of enrollment, and then we don't spend kind of those carryover dollars, and we don't spend the one-time money in the year, and now we're break even. And it is a little bit frustrating on our end, and we've had some in-depth conversations about should we be changing our focus a little bit in that regard with the one-time dollars, using a percentage of the expenditure versus just saying, yep, we're going to spend it all. So I, you know, what we continue to try and do is show you the real numbers, that they have meaning, they're based on something. They do, I hope, direct our decisions, but we could be accused of crying wolf, at least for the last few years, because I guarantee you, we're not going to be losing $3.3 million, especially if we don't spend the 1920 one-time. It's going to be much better than that. Anyway, I just point that out.
The other aspect of it that I thought was really interesting is they were noting that many others than besides you kept saying, yeah, the downturn is going to come. But the LAO, they were surprised at how, I guess, even they were, but they were saying COLA is just going to be the 1.79.
Back to the same ones, me.
However, they think that the governor is going to continue to use one-time money rather than make a base change, and that he, you know, he got, I guess he thinks he got a better impact for like hitting PERS and STIRS direct instead of, you know. So it's kind of an interesting thing. I think there's a lot of eyes waiting to see the governor's budget, and if he pairs up very closely with LAO, then that's going to be the real difference, that there will be one-time money. And it seems like, actually, I think that's where we have excelled, that we have handled one-time money really well.
Agreed. One of the other things that we have on our plate, as you probably know, but it's not in here and it shouldn't be, is there will be, on the November ballot, the Schools and Community First Bill, I believe it is called, to increase funding for schools. The California School Boards Association had been proposing a full and fair funding measure to go on the ballot, but they're pulling that back in order to support this community and schools first. So if that does pass, we may see more revenue coming through for schools, so we'll see.
Agreed.
It's not polling real well right now, which is one of the reasons why CSBA pulled their measure, was you don't want to be on the ballot with something that's probably going down to defeat, and it's below 50% right now, the split role tax. Yeah.
It's going to be in competition.
Okay. So this is an action item, I believe, for us to approve this?
Yes, please.
Okay. Are there further comments or questions, or may I have a motion?
I just want to note, we're self-certifying as positive. We can meet all of obligations in the current out-years.
I, I need to just ask a question also. Page, what is it, 14, the report on page 14, which is the multi-year with the one-time funds, expenditure and revenue removed, is one of the most important pieces in here for me, along with your assumptions. And when I look at this, you know, we've, you've talked about the deficit spending, you've explained that, you've explained the fund balance reserve, but looking at 2021, you know, our projected undesignated ending fund balance is 5 million, and we have not gone into any kind of negotiations with our bargaining units. And so that concerns me, if there's only 5 million left in that undesignated balance, and then 38, 3 million 800 in that next year, and we haven't looked at compensation yet, I'm afraid that that fund balance, you know, it's starting out high, and it's going down rapidly. And so, do you have ideas on how we can navigate this? What's...
Well, I don't want to be accused of negotiating outside the table.
Of course.
So I'll be careful of that.
And I don't mean to put you in that position, I just...
But I would say this, I would say that if you look over the last three years, certainly compensation was the priority in an environment where we didn't have a deficit.
Right.
We have a deficit.
But we are running a pretty serious structural deficit here.
Correct. And so I think in that environment, we've always been very clear with our three priorities: deficit reduction, compensation, program enhancement. We need to deal with the deficit, in my opinion, financially. And then you still have the two priorities of compensation and program enhancement. And right now, there's a lot of work going on, on innovative scheduling, which will cost money. So I think we're just in that environment where we've got to really raise up the priority of deficit reduction is where a lot of the new money is going to need to go, especially what we're looking at in the 2021 year.
Exactly, especially with ADA not projected to really increase next year, but, you know, the following year it'll bump up. So, yeah, I'm starting to feel kind of like the road is getting more and more narrow, and there's no place to go.
The only other thing, yeah, the only other thing I'd say is when we believe we've had additional dollars and we've seen that happen, the prior compensation is something that we've honored in some manner at the table. When we haven't had it, or we showed that we were really running these deficits, we were pretty clear that we wouldn't be able to do everything we wanted to do in that priority.
Got it.
But, again, that needs to be at the table, and we'll work through that.
I'd hate to be using that one-time money just to have a fund balance, so, okay. Thank you, I'm, I'm good.
Kathy?
Move 11.2.4.
Yeah. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Kaiser, we have a second by Eileen Robinson. Are there any more comments or questions from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes. We passed the interim budget. Thank you very much, everyone, for all your excellent work.
Who's playing with the lights? Phil.
Okay, we're going to move to 11.3, Human Resources, Mr. Hanlon.
So each year, as a mayor of district, we bring a name forward to the board for approval. Last year, it was CSCA who brought their name forward to, for approval. This year, it is our neutral. So the member from CSCA and the member from the district has chosen Scott Jones to bring his name once again forward. He's agreed to, and, and therefore, we're bringing it forward for you for approval.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, Eileen?
Oh, it's... It's not a question, I just move approval of the appointment of Scott Jones as the neutral on the Personnel Commission.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further questions or discussions from the audience? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that concludes the Human Resources portion. Okay, now we're moving to a informational segment where all of the board members attended the CSBA conference this past weekend in San Diego, and there were many interesting workshops. And fortunately, we had the opportunity already on Friday to discuss some of these things. However, if there is someone who, or anyone who briefly wants to bring forth some comments, we can limit that to, say, five minutes per person.
Thirty seconds.
And anyhow, Ms. Robinson?
Yes, thank you. And, and thank you to the district for agreeing to send us to this very worthwhile conference every year. There, there really is a lot that we bring back that enhances our ability to govern well. One of the sessions that I attended was Equity for Students with Disabilities: What Governance Teams Should Know. And I just want to highlight, number one, the, the amazing panel. Maureen Bernas was the statewide special ed task force coordinator, and I know that we've received that report and, and have used it to, to take a look at some of what we're doing. Carla Estrado, who was a collaborator for Educational Excellence, Kristen Wright, Director of Special Education Division, California Department of Education, and Victoria Graff, Professor of Educational Support Services at Loyola University. The one point that I wanted to make that was their continuing theme highlight through their entire presentation was that, first, students are all general ed students, and that the IDEA and, and our other special education laws say that first, least restrictive environment is general ed. Then they admit that, you know, there, there are exceptions and needs that can't be met in a general ed classroom, but that they're limited if you have the resources to put into support. That's where the, the rubber meets the road. They absolutely recognize that it's all about funding, it's all about prioritizing, you know, what you're going to, to use in the way of assets and resources to support all of your students. Moving on then to the other project that was extremely helpful was the riding the social-emotional roller coaster. Sylvan Union District, Union School District, their assistant superintendent coordinates their social-emotional supports, and they are doing almost mirroring what Chico Unified has put forward in the last year in the way of social workers and more counselors, more elementary school counseling. But one of the things that stuck out to me was their philosophy that all relationships are important, and they do as much work with getting their adults support and teaching their adult staff how to, how to ride that emotional roller coaster, and that lots of times you forget that, you know, our, our staff are being impacted along with the kids. And in this disaster environment that we're in, I felt that that was important. The other thing they talked about was finding community partners. They said lots of times you can't get financial support from community partners, but there are service clubs and mentorship programs and other things that you can pull in to help augment what you're trying to do with your social-emotional support programs. The last was the Protect Project, which was talking about predators and sex trafficking, and they said that the most significant impact you can have in protecting your kids is talking about it. Talk about it from junior high on. Let them know these dangers are out there. Teach them how to respond. Teach them about people that do the grooming to pull kids into these sex trafficking situations. And they said that that is being shown now to be the most effective way of helping keep our children safe, is to give them the knowledge of what to do, what to look for, the, the fact that they use the same kind of grooming dialogue with all of them. And so I thought that was important. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing that, Eileen. Kathy, did you have anything you wanted to share?
Yeah, I'll just make it really quick. So I went to several ones that are legal issues. There are a number of school board policies that are, have changed, already been passed, but haven't been fully implemented yet, and some of them are three years in arrears by different school boards. A lot of it because the legal issues are very complicated, but they are suggesting extremely strongly that there's a huge financial threat in not being ready. I'll just give an example of one. They've changed the age at which someone could report back that they were a victim of a sexual incident at a school. That victim could wait until they're 40 years old and report it. Forget about the perp, that's not, the real financial burden will be if the school district cannot prove, or the school cannot prove, that they had policies in effect at the time the incident happened. So you have to be able to go back and show and prove that you had those policies. So that was, that's just one, they said the, the penalties could be three times the normal penalties. So it's a huge challenge to our, how we keep our board policies, how we're updating them. It was, it was scary. The other aspect of it is LGBTQ1 was giving a lot of pointers about how the law is changing in that way. The ballot item that's going to be on the ballot alone is only going to give 40% to schools and 60% to communities, but it still may be the only new money that would come from a new, a new source. So, we'll talk about that later. But I went to the census one, and I have buttons and stuff like that. The census is going to be so critical for us, and they are saying schools are one of the most trusted sources. So getting our families that speak a different language, the most undercounted group in the 2010 census was children, dramatically undercounted. March, oh, wait a minute, the census is April 1st. You better count that baby. And that's what a lot of parents don't realize. They don't count the little kids, they're not, or they feel threatened in some way. So we're, I think we're going to have to do a very major informational, educational approach to get all our families to get their people counted. So that's a really big item, and I got the buttons to prove it.
In the interest of time, I'm going to pass, because we've talked about quite a few of the things. I went to a similar, a seminar very similar to your social-emotional learning, NAPA, Unified School District, very much the same things you spoke of. And I have already spoken with you at our dinner about teacher housing and the charter school 1505. So I'm just going to pass it on to you.
Okay. You know, it was, I think it was a fabulous CSBA this year. I, I just personally had such a great time, and I thought the speakers, the keynote speakers were just phenomenal. They were just wonderful. But the one thing I wanted to bring up, doesn't have to do with a workshop I attended, but an idea I had, we also have the ability to go on the exhibitor's floor and see a lot of what was going on there. And I spent my time visiting all the booths that had to do with the trades, the sheet metal workers, the masonry workers, the carpenters, the pipe fitters, all these different people. And those people are just desperate to find workers these days, because everybody is getting into things that are not the trades, because somehow those got a bad, bad rep. But I'll tell you what, those people, because of the demand for those kind of workers, are experiencing very high rates of pay these days. And if you've ever had to have your HVAC fixed or your plumbing fixed, you will find out that the rates have increased significantly over the last five years, particularly us in this area because of what went on in Paradise and the construction that's going on, they are really desperate. So these people have apprenticeship programs that they are offering, and I think we really do need to make our students aware of these programs, and perhaps have some sort of either open house or a jobs fair or something, so that a lot of these kids, particularly the kids even at the junior high school level, can understand that there is a future in other types of work. other types of work that can be very fulfilling and, you know, profitable for them. So I'd like to see that happen, and I'm going to try to do what I can to make it happen.
You know, to, to piggyback on that, our, our first keynote speaker, Dr. Kaku?
Yeah.
He actually talked about the jobs of the future, and the service industry is one that will remain.
Right.
Robots cannot do...
They cannot do those kind of jobs, and those are going to remain, and those are the ones that are not being filled. So anyhow...
I'm sorry Julie isn't here because I had a different experience. I went to the labor unions who were sitting on their butts, no one was there talking to them, and I asked them, why don't they ever come to us? Not a sound.
Really?
Not a sound. Well, you look at how many of our building projects can't get qualified.
Exactly. They need somebody like Liz to organize them and bring them here. That's why. Anyhow, I'm going to do it. Well, we need it. We need, we need that to happen, and that is a missing element. So anyhow, I'm going to do what I can to make it happen. Okay, so going on now to the rest of our items. If there's any items from the floor? No items from the floor? So we'll pass on that. Announcements. There was one announcement I failed to make that I should have made, and I don't even know if there's tickets for this available yet, but, or still, because they sell out really rapidly, is the Chico High School Victorian Dinner.
Right.
If you have not been to that, that is fabulous. I went to that last year. It was just so remarkable and wonderful, and it's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday this upcoming weekend. They may be sold out, but if not, you should go. It's fabulous. Okay, any other announcements?
Nope.
Okay, then I'm going to adjourn.
Liz, you need to adjourn us back to closed session.
I'm going to adjourn us back to closed session. Thank you.